Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to the Board of Commissioners, City Hall of Bowling Green Regular Meeting, City Hall, November 4th, 2025 at 4:30 PM. We'll begin with the invocation and pledge allegiance, and I'll turn it over to Commissioner Sue Perigin.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Wow, it's a packed house. This is great. This is Jacob's lucky day. I'm going to introduce Mr. Jacob Stevens, who's a native of Bowling Green and a graduate of Greenwood High School. We won't hold that against him purpose. It's okay. He did graduate from Western Kentucky University in the Southern Baptist Theological Seminary. He's a member of Living Hope Baptist Church and has been a missionary in Portugal since 2014, and he also has the, I guess, not so great of being my next door neighbor. So, thank you, Jacob, for being here, and his oldest daughter, Elizabeth, is here with him. So, I'm going to ask Elizabeth to come up, and she's going to lead us in the pledge when her daddy is done with the prayer.
Let's pray.
Please stand up, pray.
Jesus, we thank you for this opportunity. We acknowledge that you are a God of order, and we thank you for this opportunity to pursue order in our community as we live in a world marked by sin and struggle and difficulty, but we have a unique opportunity as citizens of this specific place to pursue order in this world. So, I want to thank you and praise you for that. We ask, Father, that your blessing would be upon everyone here making decisions. We know that from your word that all authority ultimately comes from you, and I ask, oh, Lord, that you'd allow anyone here to exercise their authority with principles and ideals that come from your word, whether that be justice, compassion, kindness. And so, I pray that that would be the primary goal of the work that happens here. And so, we want to thank you, we want to praise you, and we want to lift up all this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
All right. Ms. Elizabeth is going to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Way to go. Let's give her a hand for that. She did great.
What a way to start a commission meeting. Elizabeth, well done. Knocked it out of the park there. We have a few guests in the house tonight. We're going to, first, we'll begin with the roll call. Mrs. Jackson?
Commissioner Bailey?
Here.
Commissioner Beasley Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Perigin?
Here.
Mayor Alcott?
Here.
First, tonight, we have a tournament that happened this summer, and we're going to make some reconciliations of acknowledgement, and I'm going to bring up Stan England to the podium first, and then we're going to bring up Tanner South along with Stan, so come up to this podium. And we would like to recognize first just the committees that put together these tournaments that were simultaneously this year for girls' tournament and the boys' tournament, which is the Junior Golf Committee. Are they here tonight?
They're here, yes, sir.
Please stand up.
Chief Delaney's out of town. Would y'all please stand up? Thank you.
Please stand up.
Well, Mayor and Commissioners, I just want to say that I've been blessed in my lifetime. The good Lord's put a lot of good people in my path since I walked these streets maybe as a 10-year-old or even earlier. From Brent Belcher to all around this room, I feel so blessed. And when we end up with a tournament like we had this year, one of the best junior golf tournaments in the state of Kentucky, we had a tournament at Crosswinds, approximately 70 boys played. Over at Paul Walker, we had 30-some girls. We had from 70 to 100 putters in the six-to-10-year-old. It was the best junior golf tournament, ladies and gentlemen, and these are the people on this committee and Tanner and Zach and Brent, they're the reason. We've been working at this about 10 years, and I'm just so thankful from Mr. Mizel here all the way around to be able to stand here and say, "We did a good job," and thank all of you very much. Thank you.
Stan, Tanner, Tanner South.
I forgot your sheriff, I'm sorry.
Hey, Sheriff.
On July 16th this year, we hosted our usual City Junior Championship. Normally, we do it on separate days, but this year, we had the opportunity with the growing of the boys' event. Like Stan said, we had about 70 boys golfers, which is a little bit to the max on a nine-hole golf course, so we kind of switched the format. We tried this year to set up the tournament on one single day, just to see how it would run and just see how we would go from there. For the girls' event, we had about 30 girls playing at Paul Walker in the morning, and then at Crosswinds, we had about 70 boys playing their first 18-hole event. We wanted to keep the history of the event at Paul Walker. It was the 60th year of it, and then we had the 10th year of the girls, so we wanted to make sure we kept the history of the event at Paul Walker Golf Course, just with that course having enriched the history, a lot of past champions and a lot of future champions to come. So, we had a 27-hole event for the boys, ranging from all the Warren County along with Bowling Green City Schools, and we also had teams from Barron County. We had a kid or two from Allen County, Hart County, so the event's growing, which is a good thing. It allows the kids to have the tournament feel. We are right after dead period, so it allows the kids to get a tournament feel, just to boost up for the season and use it as a tryout, but also play against a very competitive event, and we had a lot of good scorers out there. But I know our champions are ready to be honored. It is November, so I feel bad for having the jackets done a little bit later than expected, but I want to make sure they are honored with the utmost respect and gratitude for, so just want to bring up Caroline Childers and Rowdy Harris.
All right, Caroline.
Our champion.
Childers, come right up here. Rowdy Harris, come on down. We have some swag.
But first things first, on the girls' side, like we said, we had about 30 girls playing, and Caroline ended up being the champion. She is a senior from Bowling Green High School, and she shot a great score of 78. And on the boys' side, like I said, our format did change. It ended up being a 27-hole event, so we had 18 holes at Crosswinds, and we took the top 12 to 15 scorers, ended up being those that shot 80 or better, and we went and ended up playing a nine-hole event at Paul Walker to finish up the tournament that afternoon, and shooting a stellar round of 70 at Crosswinds, which is two under par, along with another nine, shooting a 35, which is one under par, as an eighth grader from Bowling Green as well, Rowdy Harris. But I know we want to get some pictures and photo ops. I just want to thank our BGPR staff, our City of Bowling Green, for allowing us to be able to have this tournament. It's a growing event. Golf is growing, so just want to appreciate you all. We'll get some pictures. We want to get, we'll get all our Junior Golf Committee, if you want to come up, we'll get photos, and we'll go from there.
On behalf of the city, Rowdy, we give you the key to the city. You got a handshake right there. Caroline.
Okay, Mr. Richards.
I'm taller than y'all anyway.
Yeah.
Hillary, you can scoot up. You're good.
I don't think so. I can't get their picture.
Hey, Judge Gorman in here? Get up here, guys.
I'm just visiting.
Judge, please come on up. Hey, Judge, please come up. Judge Gorman helps us a lot also. He's a great man. That's what they say.
All right, now, we're going to bring some friends all the way from Germany, and we have four, three host families. Come on over, come on up. Phil, bring in here.
You might have to do this again. Already got your winter jacket going. Put you on the way through.
All right. This past June, Bowling Green High students and teachers traveled all the way to Germany as part of a German exchange program. This program has been going on since 1972, so 53 years this program has been existence. And for the past 25 years, Bowling Green has been lucky to partner with Gutenberg Gymnasium in Erfurt, Germany, and we have nine exchange students. We have two teachers. Two teachers, raise your hand. Three teachers. And we have nine exchange students. Raise your hand. And then we have our host families that are here, and they went to Germany, and now the exchange is they're coming to Bowling Green. And I have a nice niece here. This is Lila, senior at Bowling Green. So, Commissioners, come on in, and we welcome, and we want to continue this fantastic program for our city and honor them as they go back home from our city to their Burgermeister. To our friends in Germany. And Dana, you're hosting a family too, right?
Yes, yes. Greg, we're over. Oh, yes, this is our German exchange student. It's been wonderful.
All right, y'all have fun tonight. Thank y'all for visiting us. Enjoy y'all.
Come back. Thank you, Pastor Jacob, Elizabeth.
All right, at this time, I'll ask our city manager, Mr. Jeff Mizel, do you have comments?
The only one I have, Mayor, is if you are here and want to make public comments that does not pertain to a subject on the agenda, please sign the register in the back corner of the room. We'll take those up after regular session. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mizel. Our first item is approval of minutes, regular meeting, October 21st, 2025.
So moved.
Second, by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Perigin. No discussion. Roll call, please.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2025-267.
Munis Water approving the career path advancement of David Webb to the position of Operations Maintenance Technician III, and Austin Jones and John Lyons to the position of Operations Technician II in the Public Works Department.
So moved.
Second, moved by Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Carlos Bailey. Mr. Mizel.
I'd like to ask Andy Souza, our Public Works Director, to come up and make these recommendations. Andy?
Good evening, everyone. It's my honor to bring three gentlemen before you for promotion tonight, and as we hire folks into the Public Works Operation Division, the very first thing we require them to do is earn a commercial driver's license within one year. So, that's the entrance fee to get into operations, and then from there, they work on 100-plus tasks, and that's everything from snow plows to chainsaws to pouring sidewalks. So, two of those gentlemen are here tonight. I'll ask Austin to stand up first, and John to stand up second. Both of these gentlemen have met all the requirements for promotion to Maintenance Technician II, and they are certified and ready to go, and I humbly ask for your approval. And then unfortunately, Mr. Webb was not able to attend tonight. I'll stand by for any questions.
Thank you, Andy. Gentlemen, do y'all have any family with you tonight? Wave to them on TV. All right, well, we're going to make this official, and congratulations on your first year of being very successful, and congratulations on this promotion. Roll call, please.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes, congratulations. Municipal Order Number 2025-268.
Munis Water approving the promotions of Daniel Ashley to the position of Battalion Chief, Kyle Hampton to the position of Captain, and Dylan Hawkins to the position of Engineer in the Fire Department.
So moved.
So moved.
Move by Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Hill. Mr. Mizel.
As Chief Brooks comes up, I'd like to acknowledge and congratulate Battalion Chief Tim Buchanan for 23 years of service. He is, has retired as of October 30th, just last week, and so we've got some opportunity that Chief's going to make some recommendations on. Chief?
Good evening. Today, tonight's a great night, not because a man leaves after 23-plus years, because he leaves a big hole, but he did leave five days ago on last Thursday, healthy and happy, and that's the goal for any of our employees, and it's our job to make sure that they do that if we can. But the reason why it's a great night is because the three men that we bring before you tonight, A, we have the confidence in them that we will be able to sustain, maintain, and then over time, through time in the new position and the new responsibility, that we'll be able to exceed and take it to another level. And if we've done it the right way, then we'll succeed. The three men, I'm going to ask that they stand, Daniel Ashley to Battalion Chief, Kyle Hampton to the rank of Captain, and Dylan Hawkins to the rank of Engineer. These three men have our confidence, and we can answer any questions that you might have.
Chief, thank you very much. Was Kyle, start with you. Do you have any family here? Like to recognize?
Got to tell them who they are. That's his wife and tubal.
My son Dylan and my son David.
Nice to see y'all tonight. Daniel?
My wife Laura, my daughter Sally, my son Bo, and my mom, Rosalie.
Fantastic. And Dylan?
My brother Mason, my mom Ashley, my sister Lynn, my grandmother Patricia, my father Doug, and all my brothers who are here in New Hampshire.
Fantastic. Well, we're glad your families are here because your fire department is your family, and this is all of the family here to support you and to see you guys take care of our community. We're proud of y'all. Commissioners, we ready for this? Congratulations. All right, roll call, please.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes, congratulations.
Munis Water approving the probationary appointment of Amy Miller to the position of Assistant Chief Financial Officer in the Finance Department.
So moved.
Second.
Move by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown. Mr. Mizel.
With the promotion of Aaron Blue to CFO, that opened up a vacancy over in Finance for Assistant CFO, I'd like to ask TR Britt to come up and make the recommendation. TR?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. We would like to make a recommendation for Assistant Chief Financial Officer. This position is going to be responsible for auditing, reconciliation, financial reports. We had 29 qualified candidates. 16 of those were qualified out of the 29, and then we interviewed four, and we would like to recommend Ms. Amy Miller, who is here with us this evening. If she would please stand. So, Ms. Miller is a graduate of Graham High School in Graham, Kentucky. She has a master's in business. She is an avid volunteer with Curbside Ministries and The Foundry, and she's had extensive finance experience as far as being a VP of Finance, and most recently, she was a plant controller for a multi-color corporation. So, we'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
TR, Amy, welcome tonight.
Thank you.
You have anyone that you'd like to say hello to?
Thank you.
All right, well, we're proud of you and look forward to you joining our city.
Thank you.
All right, well, hang on, hang on. We got to make it official. We ready? Roll call, please.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes, congratulations, Amy. Municipal Order Number 2025-270.
Munis Water approving the probationary appointment of Heaven Sanchez to the position of Parks Forester Arborist in the Parks and Recreation Department.
So moved.
Move by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Hill. Mr. Mizel.
Due to a vacancy in this position, we had to go back out and look for a replacement, like to ask TR Britt, HR Manager for Parks, to come back up. TR?
Hello again. His name is Heaven, so that gave him a couple of points, you know, because he had such a cool name. But this arborist position is going to be responsible for a lot of planning, implementing, like it was previously. We had 14 applications, and we interviewed four of those candidates. Our candidate that we would like to recommend is here with us this evening as well. If he would please stand. So, Mr. Heaven is a graduate of Wenatchee High School in Wenatchee, Washington. He holds a bachelor's degree as well as a, excuse me, a bachelor's degree in forest and rangeland stewardship and a minor in GIS. He's also worked as a hayfield manager and most recently, an arborist at Atlas Field Services in Nashville, Tennessee. So, we think he's ready to rock and roll, and we'll answer any of your questions.
Thank you, TR. Heaven, welcome to the city. Anyone with you tonight?
My wife David.
Hello, all right. Wave at him. All right. Commissioners, we ready? Roll call, please.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes, congratulations, Heaven Sanchez. Municipal Order Number 2025-271.
Munis Water approving the probationary appointment of Hunter Hayes to the position of Operations Maintenance Technician I in the Public Works Department.
So moved.
Second.
Move back Commissioner Hill, second back Commissioner Beasley Brown. Mr. Mizel.
We're going to get our money's worth out of TR tonight. TR, come back up, and she's going to make a recommendation to fill this vacancy in Ops.
So, one more time, we would like to make a recommendation for Operations Maintenance Technician. They're going to be a big part of all the city grounds and structures. We had 35 applications that we received, 23 of those were qualified, and we interviewed eight candidates. Our candidate for this evening is here with us. If he would please stand, Mr. Hunter Hayes. So, his most recent position was a heavy equipment operator at A&amp;G Tree Service, so he has a lot of experience, and he is also a graduate from Emmonson County High School. So, please let us know if you have questions.
Hey, TR, is Hunter here? Oh, there he is. He's behind you. Welcome, Hunter. Anyone with you tonight?
Yes.
All right, well, we're ready to make you part of our city. Congratulations to you. Commissioners, roll call, please.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes, congratulations, Hunter Hayes. Ordinance Number BG 2025-26, first reading, non-binding.
Ordinance submitting code of ordinances. Ordinance repealing and revising Chapter 21, Public Infrastructure Rights of Way in Stormwater, Subchapter 21-2, Stormwater Quality Related to Stormwater Requirements of the City of Bowling Green Code of Ordinances.
So moved.
Second.
Move by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Perigin. Mr. Mizel.
As you all know, we have had multiple meetings discussing a proposed stormwater ordinance that would involve fee in lieu of construction as well as the utility fee. This would be a replacement in Chapter 21-2. Andy, Matt, their teams, as well as our consultants are here tonight with us to answer any questions you all have, but basically, we're looking at equivalent residential unit calculation for commercial properties, which measures your impervious surface. We've got technology that has done that calculation for the whole 42 square miles of the city, and then we've also got language in here to provide for a $4 flat fee for all residential properties in the city. And as you all know, we've got a tremendous need for addressing our stormwater issues, and we feel like this ordinance, this fee lock, this utility fee, will make a huge stride in getting us closer to resolving our stormwater issues. We've got probably a couple hundred million dollars' worth of work out there that needs to be done over the next 50, 100 years, soon, sooner than later. But Matt's here. We can do this however y'all want to, ask questions, or if y'all want Matt to give you one more quick overview, but I think we've seen this multiple times, and you all, we sent it to you a little bit early to give you a look at it, so I'll give it back to you, Mayor, however y'all want to handle it.
I believe, you know, this is a big pill for our community to absorb, and there's a timeline, and I think here in the timeline of what is our plan of execution is important, and that's been updated from our understanding, and Matt, we'd love to hear what you have to say.
Well, sure. In short, we have looked across the state. We've looked at the various mechanisms that cities are using to establish stormwater utilities, and we've tried to make sure that the City of Bowling Green makes its beginning into this area at a level that is a bit below the average or right at the average in many respects. We know that this is not the end-all, be-all. This will not support every single need that we have for drainage moving forward. Everyone who lives here, everyone who drives on our streets, everyone who moves in and around this community is using that storm sewer infrastructure, and it's time to give it the attention that's due, and we believe that this stormwater utility is the right way forward to begin that process. And as we enter a series of years where we have a dedicated budget, we have a dedicated understanding of the funding that will come in, that will allow us to go out and assess this system, make the proper plans, make the necessary urgent repairs, and begin to plan for the future so that we can apprise you all as we move forward that, yes, this utility is priced right, we can continue at the status quo, or we're going to need to revise this numbers up or down. Along with that stormwater utility fee comes the fee in lieu of construction, which is something that our development community has been asking us for, for a long time. With the two components coming together, we're finally, we believe, able to offer a solution, and our industry contacts that we've spoken with are excited about that opportunity, and we think that will actually allow a few projects that have been kind of waiting in the wings to go ahead and come out into the light and apply for some permits. They're eager to participate. Very happy to answer any questions that you have. One thing that I should mention, since these folks are right behind me, we have also worked with the rest of our local utilities to make sure that there's nothing in this ordinance that gives them any heartburn at this point.
So, a couple of things. Could we just explain to the community when this fee will be implemented as our plan?
Understood.
And then how much would it be per dwelling, cost per year? The things that people just want to know as they're adjusting their budgets and
Absolutely.
we're looking forward to that, you know, looking forward, not looking forward to it, but we're looking forward, how is our community going to absorb this? And so, those are just simple, you know, information that we can provide right here tonight.
Absolutely. So, call attention to the folks that I've brought with me. This is Jimmy Stahl. He's a local Bowling Green boy that's made good. Bowling Green High graduate? Bowling Green High, purple, from back in the day. He works for a company called GPD. The fellow to his left is James Troxell. You may remember JT from our tornado response. He was one of our stormwater interns that we brought back and became our volunteer coordinator during that period, and after which he went to work for GPD. So, another one of our stormwater interns that's made good. Both of these guys have a lot of time in on this. To address the specifics of the question that you asked, all of the things that we've written into 21-2 will become effective immediately upon the second reading, with the exception of the fee itself. So, participation in the fee lock is available, all of the minor rewrites and edits that we've made to our standards, all of those things will become effective immediately. There will be no widespread rippling effects from those things. Those are pretty ordinary, unless you have a large project that's going to come into the fee lock, that's probably not going to have an impact on your daily life. The stormwater fee itself, the beginning of the utility, we will not collect any fees until January 1 of 2027. That long period of time gives us plenty of time to work with GPD or whoever else we need to bring into our system to write out a series of credits for commercial enterprises, to reach agreements with some of our largest property owners, to make sure that we're being equitable and fair in how they're going to be billed, and to reach in our local agreements with our local utilities and how these utilities might support one another in the efforts that we have to serve this community. So, it's going to be over a full year before anyone sees any fees at all. That ERU, that's an equivalent residential unit, and it essentially means what is the average size of a residential home? That ERU, that's an equivalent residential unit, and it essentially means what is the average size of a residential home with regard to impervious surface? That is areas that can't soak up rainwater. So we took a look at every single one of those, that was some work that JT did. We got data from a company called NV5, we bought that, JT did the analysis on that, and he identified our ERU as being 4,200 square feet. The larger an ERU is, the lower your stormwater fees. The 4,200 square foot ERU for commercial users, that is the second largest ERU in the state. It is validated and backed up by our data, we're confident that we're correct. So that's one way that commercial users are actually going to see that this fee is going to be a little bit less than what we originally announced, is because that ERU is larger. That ERU will apply to all residential users and all residential dwellings across the city equally. So anyone that lives in the City of Bowling Green in a residential setting will pay $4 per month, a total of $48 per year into that stormwater fund to make sure that we're able to provide them the level of service that they expect from us. We didn't necessarily want to do a presentation, but we did bring along some informative stuff. This is the very beginning of our educational campaign that we'll do across the community. One of those up there describes what we call our design storm or our retention level storm. That is the three-hour, 100-year storm, and the depth of that storm is 4.01 inches. We average having a four-inch storm or greater about every five years. That's the base level of surface that our community should be able to expect from us. That storm puts about one, excuse me, if you can imagine a football field with both of the end zones attached, 1,880 feet high, a third of a mile high, that cube of water, rectangle of water, that's how much falls in one of those rain events that we need our storm sewer system to either hold back or to convey or to get downstream and away from our public. That's the minimum level of a storm that we should expect our storm sewer system to be taxed, but effective. And we can't meet that obligation now. We have areas that flood in that storm now. So we have an absolute need to take these funds out and to begin to invest in that infrastructure right away.
Thank you, Matt. And how will people see this fee and where will they see it?
Remains to be determined. We're going to work with some partner agencies and we hope that this is in addition to an existing utility bill. That's going to require that we enter into some interlocal agreements with some partners, and the details of that remain to be seen. So what this ordinance does is establish and authorize our stormwater utility to enter into interlocal agreements with those other agencies, but it does not firmly establish where that billing is going to come from at this point.
Very much, Matt.
Matt, is it my understanding that the county is already doing this?
That's exactly right.
And for how long and how has that been going?
Right, the county has entered into this program, I think Judge, oh, he left. 2007, I think, is when their program started. $4 is also their residential rate, we've matched it exactly. Their commercial rate differs a little bit from ours, theirs is not ad valorem, it's a simple tiered fee structure. But they've had theirs in existence since 2007 and have been collecting those stormwater fees. So if you are someone who's moved from the county into the city, this won't be surprising for you at all, we hope. We hope it's fairly seamless that our city residents now look just exactly like our county residents.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could you let us know what the other two images are?
Sure, those are just for discussion, and Ashley's going to kill me because I didn't give them to her ahead of the meeting. However, the residential area is one that you see that's there in pink, that identifies where our single-family residential areas are, that's the light pink, and then our multifamily stuff is the darker reddish color there. So it's just simply identifying where in the city are those types of users. This is a land use cover map, it's pretty common, it's available on the website right now. That just simply describes what all of our land uses are, whether that's public or agriculture or commercial. The purple on that map is where you're going to find our commercial users. And then, of course, the pinks and reds, that's where you're going to find our residential users.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So when we first started talking about this, and I'm just so grateful knowing that the floods that our community has faced, that we are thinking through, you know, how do we make sure that we're investing in infrastructure that makes our community safe from floods in the future? And we're resolving those issues that the neighborhoods came to us and asked us to resolve so that these homes that they've invested in are excited to raise their families in are actually places that they can do that. So thank you all for doing this work over these months to put together this structure. I know from the beginning, as we were talking about this in this past January, we talked about, you know, being concerned about, you know, our seniors and those on disability and their fixed income. And there were a couple of other municipalities across Kentucky that do have, you know, options for those who are or have a more restricted budget. So could you talk about, I didn't see that in this final draft, so could you talk about the process of, you know, researching those and where we're at now?
Yes, absolutely. Two things, though. We're always so careful to talk about that there's always a bigger storm. So yes, we're going to do everything that we can to make our community more flood-worthy, more flood-proof. But it doesn't matter what we do, there's always the potential that some days there's a bigger storm. So we want to be more ready, we want to be more prepared, but we can never promise that we will make them flood-proof. We did look across the state of Kentucky at all of the discount programs that were available. With regard to specifically the way we wanted to set that up, in terms of, we wanted to provide a discount to those who needed a discount from a socioeconomic status. When we looked first, we found that there are two other cities across the state that allow users that have less than one ERU of impervious surface, and this is a lot of acronyms here, but less than half of the amount of impervious surface than the average. So a couple standard deviations away. They were offered that rate at one-half ERU. So basically, that's just saying, if you're on a smaller area, then you have a smaller fee. However, for us, when we took a look at the math, that was only going to impact about 400 to 500 residences across the City of Bowling Green. I think even less than that, wasn't it? 120 residences across the City of Bowling Green. And that isn't necessarily indicative of someone's social status, or socio-financial status, I suppose. It doesn't reflect or doesn't directly correlate to their income level or their need for a discount as to whether or not they have a smaller or larger impervious surface on their property. So we didn't feel like that one captured it. The one other method that we've seen, so it was one-half ERU, and then the other one was just simply tiered, right, multifamily. The other one was that it was City of Murray? No, Murray? Murray. City of Murray also has a bit of a system that we talked about wherein if it's a multifamily parcel, there's more than one dwelling per parcel, they charge one-half ERU to each one of those dwellings. However, we also realized that that also doesn't directly correlate to income. Simply because you are living in a circumstance where you've got a duplex or a triplex or even an eightplex, it doesn't necessarily mean that you're at the socioeconomic level that we're trying to do, trying to provide a discount for. So it is a discount that is going to be applicable to a certain style of property, regardless of whether or not the residents of that property are in that universe of people that we really want to try to reach, which is, let's make sure that the folks who can't afford this are afforded the right kind of a discount. The only city in the state, there's only one other discount in the state for residential, and that's Lexington Fayette Urban County Government, LFUCG. Their program does provide a discount to seniors over age 65, those residents that are receiving Social Security disability, and those residents with a household income of $25,000 or less. For us, we're going to see that there are roughly, all told, accounts-wise, there's more, there's less parcels, more accounts, about 36,000 accounts are going to be associated with our stormwater utility. Of those about, and JT's going to jump in if I get any of these numbers wrong, of those roughly 17,000 are going to be residential style. And inside of those, those are residential parcels, are another 16,000 residential dwellings. So within a universe of 17,000, we'll find that there are another 16,000 that are multifamily. Essentially, what happens to us is we fall down an administrative whirlwind where we only have a staff of four at the moment. And we're going to find ourselves in an effort to look for those right kind of people to be able to offer those discounts to, that we're going to need two or three full-time staff people in order to be able to keep track of, do you meet any of these criteria that would allow you to get a discount from $48 to $24 per year? So that would be the maximum level that we've seen anywhere is a 50% discount. So it would reduce your cost from 48 to 24, but the utility itself, in order to administer that reduction, is going to see a pretty tremendous cost in how much it's going to cost us to keep track of who gets what and where they are. The more complex we make our billing system, the more it's going to cost us to maintain it. So we did a bit of a cost benefit analysis, you know, in the best-case scenario, we can find a few hundred homes that really need that $24 difference over an annual cycle. What's it going to cost us to get them that $24? And it's much more than that $24. So we weren't able to find a solution for a community our size that was focused on the people we want to focus on with regard to getting a discount to the right people that we could afford to do administratively. And so what we've approached that from is, we looked across the whole state, we said, what is everyone charging? What are all their ERUs? And let's base our total fee at the highest discount we possibly can. So we didn't do a Louisville MSD, which has a fee of, and I'm going to get a call out from the back, Nick, was it $12?
$12.58.
$12.58, where we're at four. We are below the median, excuse me, we are below the mean and exactly at the median. The average across the state is $4.48, and the median is $4 even, that's where we're at. So we feel like our program fee in and of itself is at a rate that's affordable for anyone. And we feel like that trying to narrow that focus anymore, to find those select few to give that extra discount to, causes us enough administrative burden that we don't get the return from it that we need to get. Does all that make sense? It's pretty complicated, but...
Can I clarify, I just want to make sure that I heard something correct. The full fee is $48 per year.
Yes.
Okay, so...
The maximum discount would be down to $24 per year.
Right, so if you're living in a multifamily, you're looking at $24 per year. And it's, this is not insurance, so it's not protecting you 100%.
Of course not.
We get that, we don't know what next storms coming our way. We didn't predict several storms that came our way. But you're protecting your valuables from most likely flooding for $24? If you're living in a multifamily. And if single-family residential, it's $48, and that's per year.
That's right.
Okay.
Unless I missed something? Did I miss hear something?
Family, it's still $4 per...
Dwelling, yes. So $48 per dwelling, $48 per residential, yes. Yeah, it's $4 regardless of your residential circumstances.
So there's no half rate here that you're proposing?
There is no half rate at all.
Everyone, no matter whether it's multifamily?
Yes. Residential across the board is $4, $48 per year.
I feel like you guys presented a chart of the different cities and their rates, but I didn't see that in our packet, and I don't remember. Is there, what's Lexington's rate?
I may have that with me.
What, roughly 16 other stormwater cities out there?
595. Lexington is 595. Is there rate? And what was your question, sir?
How many cities, how many stormwater utilities are out there?
16.
In the state?
Counting us, we'll make the 16.
We would make 16, okay.
Then their half rate? Yeah. Oh. 30%.
And if you meet one of those three criteria, over 65 recipient of SSI or under 25,000 household income, they do a 30% discount.
But I guess what, what was the rate for the county when it first started out?
Dollars.
So it's always been $4?
It's always been $4. Yes, sir. On the residential side, $10 on commercial.
Oh, it's $48, and it's not that much. And I feel like, and what we've witnessed in our city, you know, it's just the cost analysis. We save money over time, and I get it, we do. But I also got to look at the individuals who are, you know, can't feed themselves this right now. This is a hard time. $48, even $4 goes a long way. It could be the cost of them getting their medicine or anything like that. But I also understand that if we don't do nothing, that it's going to cost us more in the future. And so that $48 is going to be cheap in comparison to like what we don't do. So for that, I will vote yes, but I hope in the future that we do find something for our elder and our disabled population where we can possibly give them something that can help them out. Because I do know that this is a hard time. People going to the food banks right now, as we speak. There's something that I shared on my Facebook page, just basically asking them to go get food. And just that one little post was shared over 200 times. So it is concerning that I know it's $1 or $4, but also understand that, you know, $1 or $4 could pay for medicine, could pay to keep their lights on, could pay where they're living at right now. And they'll be scrambling just to find that extra $4.
So that's why we've worked so hard to keep it as low as we have. I think I may have seen you doing the math, I know I was doing it in my head, too. If I'm not mistaken, our standard fee is less than Lexington's fee would be, even with the discount.
I did that, because it's like maybe $4 and...
10 cents, yes.
Yeah.
Rough math.
And one other question. If we do partner with some other utility companies or whatever to collect this for us, there would be a collection fee that would come out of the $4. So we're not, we would never really collect the full $4 anyway. There would be a net of some sort after we pay for the collection services.
That's right, what's what we've been so focused on is generating as much as we can to make sure that we're accomplishing the mission, where we're fulfilling the promises that we're making to you by establishing utility. And you're right, there's a lot of administrative and overhead costs that are going to be absorbed just in creation of the utility, particularly in, you know, in this first year, we're going to be coming to you quite a bit to make sure that we can help our public understand the need, help our public understand how we're trying to accomplish this, and do all of the right things that when we do collect that first fee, that we have a good plan, that we have our eye on the prize, so to speak, and that we're going after the biggest needs in the biggest hurry that we can to make this community as safe as we can.
Yeah, I did the math and you're right, it is, this fee is less than the 30% discount for Lexington. So I just want to make sure I understand this right. So our rate essentially, instead of creating this structure that provides a discount to seniors and disabled and low income, we essentially just applied that same discount to everyone, and so really made it affordable.
Yeah, we've met Warren County's fee structure that they had from 2007. We're, like you said, less than a lot of these communities are, even with their discount. So we've tried to, we've tried to address this utility right from the get-go and using the larger ERU, all of those things, to make sure that it is right-sized for this community, that it is acceptable for this community. And then it's incumbent upon us to take these funds and accomplish the most that we possibly can for this community with them.
I really appreciate you all doing the work to make this affordable, because definitely concerned about our most vulnerable and making sure that this is not, you know, going to take food out of our kids' mouths or seniors' mouths and because every dollar, you know, I know counts for families that are vulnerable. So thank you all for doing the work to make sure that, you know, we have the most affordable options for everyone. Do you all have an estimate, after doing all this kind of calculations, about what we think we might be able to pull in in that first year and what type of projects we think we might be able to accomplish? Or is that still, until we kind of...
Everything is still going to be very, I do, but there's a lot of things that we need to work through with regard to some of our agency partners and some of the rest of the folks with regard to making sure that it's accurate. So I'm very hesitant to say what we think that number is right now. I'm fairly confident in this moment that it's right, but I'm also confident that given another week, I'm going to find a mistake in the math. So if it's okay at our second reading, I'd like to work through those numbers with Aaron and Katie and make sure that everybody's comfortable with me saying that out loud. Okay.
Can I ask if the language in the ordinance, if we do see that the community becomes a burden and we see that we might need some more flexibility or bring on some administrative staff to look at some discounts, does the language in this ordinance allow us to do that?
It allows us to bring the utility and its fees back to you all at any point for, excuse me, for revision. And then automatically says that we're going to come back every five years and talk to you guys.
Of course, we can do that anytime, anyway. We could even schedule a review, you know, after so long, just to see how it's going.
I do think, you know, if, at our January retreat, if we just could look at, you know, if we did decide to put on, have some administrative staff to explore it, if we could just even look at it as a capital project option, just so we know that we have looked at everything we can. I would love to just at least know that we've looked at that as hard as we can and know all the numbers.
Absolutely. And absolutely, we realize there are no end of worthy causes across the community and no end of need for your attention. And we appreciate the amount of attention that you all have paid to this issue this year.
Wait, Commissioner?
I just have, back in the beginning, we discussed the collection of this fee. I would still encourage you all to look for the least expensive way to collect this fee, whatever that might be, so we can recoup the majority of that $4 to go toward these projects.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
If we were to go to, um, the, the full effort of calculating each, I think I've talked to you about this before, Matt, each individual of your property, of your, is it 34,000 parcels that fall within our...
About, yeah, it's so...
If you were to calculate...
It's not parcels, excuse, I'm so sorry.
I'm sorry.
Twenty-one thousand parcels.
Twenty, okay.
But of, when you, when you factor in the multifamily, so when you have more than one dwelling per parcel, that becomes 36,000 stormwater utility accounts.
Got it, okay. So if you were, if you had the resources, uh, if you did calculate an ERU-type calculation on the residential side, would you not have some properties out there that end up with two, three, four ERUs in some cases that would be paying a lot more than, than $4 a month? Is that a true statement, or can you talk about that calculation?
Of course, we look at the outliers, those kind of, kind of prove that you're doing the right sort of things. So we, we looked at all this within one standard deviation of the mean when we're, when we're talking about our overall properties. So from a mathematics perspective, you know, you have a normal bell curve, we try to look in the middle. But we did look at the ends, and JT, I think you looked at one today that was ninety ERUs or something like that?
It would have turned into about $400 a year.
Yeah.
Residential.
Yeah, for residential property.
Okay.
And that's something that we discussed at length. We, we've spent so many hours looking at these sorts of things, and it's, it's, if you're trying to provide a discount to, to a particular group of people, you need a feature of that particular group of people that you can identify easily and quickly so that you can write that into your, your billing mechanisms. And it's just not there. Uh, it's just a, it's a line-by-line, case-by-case sort of an evaluation, and the administrative overhead is just huge. For, and, and then the return is $24. That's, that's, it's, it's tough to accomplish that for $24 or less.
Hey, so this has been, just for the public's education, we've been in this discussion since January of this year, and when this was first given to our board, we said, pause. You know, we wanted, we had a lot of questions, and, you know, we wanted the best way forward, and there was a lot of research that happened, and we appreciate Andy, you, your staff, Matt, Nick. I know you've put exorbitant amount of energy and time in this, but we want to get it right.
Absolutely.
And that's most important, because this problem of, you know, flooding is persisting, and we just bought seven properties this year, because the utility basins are no longer big enough for the previous neighborhoods that exist. And so every flood gets a little bit worse every time we have a new, uh, you know, pavement that's put out, or we have a new house that's put up, there's a new flow of water going in a different direction that is hurting us all. But we have to have a future for Bowling Green in the next 25 to 50 years, if we don't do anything, it's going to get worse, and it's going to be our problem. And so I, I know each commissioner up here has completely understood that we cannot ignore this problem. And, you know, we want to get it right, that's most important for us. I, you know, having this implemented for me, in my mind, gives us time to prepare. We've had a year to kind of get us to here. Now we have the public to get a year to Janu, a little over a year, January of 2027, for this additional $4 per household. And, and, but, we believe this is the way forward, and this is the way that we can start building a floodwater mitigation that can be successful for Bowling Green and our community, and hopefully be example to others in the nation how we did it right.
Mayor, I could, I, amen, I, I agree 100%. I, I believe that it would cost each citizen more than $4 a month if we do nothing, because everybody pays when we're buying houses and we're mitigating floods and all of those things on the backside, and we're not proactive, we haven't been proactive ever. So this is, this is a way to do that and to, and to keep costs at bay. So it's an investment for each and every citizen, every household, every dwelling, to protect themselves and their neighbors. So I, I really can't thank you enough for the work that you guys have done to bring this forward.
I appreciate that, and, and I'm very fortunate to be the one who gets to stand here and take those kinds of praise. I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge Mark and Joe, who's just sitting over my right shoulder, who've also participated over the course of the last year to review these drafts and to help make sure that we're making good decisions about what we're doing.
Great utility partners, and Mark Iverson. Appreciate our partnership, our utility. Uh, Mark sent out a great letter to the, uh, community. You know, we could be commercially owned and pay a lot more for our utility, or we could be publicly owned and municipal. Um, and so it, the cost of our utilities are as low as possible because they're owned by the citizens. And the citizens are the investors in our utility. And so they are a partner, our city has the appointment authority. I know Melinda's sat on the board, I've sat on the board, Carlos has sitting on the board this year. We have an invested interest in getting it right. And Mark, I will say to our utility, I would love for y'all to be part of this as we move forward, and I would like to talk to the board members to be able to help compel and get their understanding, hopefully a way forward that we can work as a partnership. Because the people I trust, the utility, and the billing system is local, um, you can do it now online, but you can do it in person, and you can ask questions, and we'd like to have that partnership continued.
To put you on the spot. Big ass.
Oh, no, no.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. We're going to take a vote on this, is there, there's a, it's on the floor? All right. Roll call, please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Ordinance number BG 2025-27, first reading, non-binding.
Ordinance providing for issuance of water and sewer revenue bond anticipation notes. Ordinance of the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky, authorizing and providing for the issuance of City of Bowling Green, Kentucky Water and Sewer Revenue Bond Anticipation Note Series 2025 for the participa, for the purpose of financing the construction of additions, expansions, and improvements to its water and wastewater system.
Don't move.
Second.
Move back to Commissioner Paragon, second back to Commissioner Hill.
As you all recall, BGMU is a component unit of the city, and we do, uh, have to approve issuance of their debt and, you know, their board appointments. But tonight, I'm going to ask Mr. Mark Iverson to come up and, uh, give you just an overview of, uh, this, this borrowing here. I think it's bond anticipation notes, preparing for some, some improvements. Uh, I think you've got Mr. Charlie Musson and, uh, Mr. Mark Rawlings with you as well. So good to have you guys with us. Mark?
Good to see you all this evening. Thank you very much for your time and attention, and I'll be happy to answer any questions once I kind of get, uh, finished with the little overview. Uh, BGMU, just like the city, is always kind of looking at, at its infrastructure, making sure that we keep it reliable for its citizens and customers. Uh, our water treatment plant, it's one of the first large investments done in Bowling Green, uh, is actually parts of that infrastructure is coming on its 100-year anniversary, in 1928, is when we had our first filter building. Still in operation today. Uh, and, uh, and if you kind of go in the pipe gallery of that old infrastructure, you'll understand why we're, one of these three projects is to renovate the pipe gallery infrastructure. It is, um, it's, it's, it's time, let me put it that way. And, and so like a lot of things that you have, you have to refurbish it to kind of keep it up and operational and, and, and reliable. And so, uh, we have three projects. I used to kind of say that, uh, our mid-sized projects, we could take, take those on and put those, you know, the rates would cover those in any one time. Construction costs have escalated significantly, uh, post-COVID. We're kind of seeing that in a lot of our pricing and projects. These are probably, have a little heavier feel to them than we normally might have seen pre-COVID. Uh, so collectively, uh, they're very important projects for the utility, uh, and we're just not going to be able to do them through current rate structure and current annual budgeting. Uh, and so we really need to find financing as the way to kind of take that and stretch that cost over a longer period of time. Uh, we, we've changed our methodology of doing construction, uh, and so we are hiring a construction manager at risk approach, which brings the construction general manager alongside the design engineers, uh, to collaboratively finish out design. Uh, so we don't really know what the final price tags on these, we have some estimates on those. Uh, that's, that's why we want to do interim financing. So tonight is really to kind of get us started on those projects, uh, and we will come back a couple of years later, uh, with a, a final, uh, financing package that brings all three of those with the final amount. This is just to kind of get us, the project started through design and early construction. I know that was a mouthful, and happy to enter, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Iverson. Makes a lot of sense, and these are important things, as we're discovering, yours, we're all discovering, but we appreciate, you gave me an, an information about the, uh, recent water build-out. I believe it was what, under 50 million, that we just built that out to double the size of our water capacity?
We added 50% capacity at our water treatment plant.
And that, but estimate, what was the...
That was a $50 million project, approximately, yes, sir.
And the cost today, had that not have been in place to replace that, would be...
If, if I had to say, if we had to start from scratch on our water treatment plant inside the fence, you'd be looking at a quarter of a billion dollars, pretty easy.
So it's amazing, and so we got a great bang for the buck, that we have that in place, and so congratulations on...
We are living off of investments made by our forefathers, uh, and it's, it's our job to kind of keep those up and reliable. That's, I think, the task we always kind of look at.
So as we make these decisions in real time, putting them off hurts us.
It, it, absolutely. And it, on that pipe gallery project in particular, we have a window of opportunity. We've never been able to take anything offline, because that plant was built in series. The first building was built right next to the next one, and you never had an opportunity to address this piping gallery. Now that we have a separate building, and we have 50% capacity, we can now take offline parts of that older infrastructure and address things that we've never been able to do before. So it's been, it's ideal timing, this is the window to be able to kind of really address things that we've not been able to do previously.
Very much.
I want to say thank you as well. I know Joe's back there, and I'm, I'm constantly listening to you guys. And one of the things that you guys did mention, but I know when Joe and I spoke, is that the water is being cleaner than some of the other areas. I know we went and got lunch, well, almost like a month and a half ago, and was talking about Michigan's water, and how they neglected what they could have done in Flint, Michigan, how they neglected certain things, and how BGMU is basically trying to stay ahead of things to make sure the water's constantly getting cleaner, you know, as we go along. So I appreciate you being on the board, I appreciate learning from you guys, and I know that this is an investment, not for just today, but it's also an investment for tomorrow, to make sure that we're having, uh, cleaner water that's out there and cleaner services and stuff. So thank you guys for that.
I always kind of use that, the analogy, I'm old enough to kind of remember old commercials. Remember the Fram oil filter commercial? You got a mechanic, and he kind of say, you can pay me now, or you can pay me later. You know, you either do your maintenance and do things on a regular basis and reinvest in your equipment, or you wait till, uh, run to failure, and then you're going to pay, and it's going to be a much more significant process at, at failure, so. We try to stay ahead of those things.
P-fosses, these are forever chemicals, are negligent in our water system and our testing and understanding.
It's non-detect.
Right here in Bowling Green, we do have clean, safe water.
Yes, sir.
All right, we ready to make this happen, commissioners?
Yes.
All right, roll call, please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Thank you very much, BGMU, Mr. Iverson. Municipal order number 2025-272.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting the number 2026-15 for fiscal year 2026 street overlay project from Scotty's Contracting and Stone LLC in an amount not to exceed
Don't move.
Second.
Move back Commissioner Paragon, second back Commissioner Bailey, Mr. Mizel.
So, uh, recently, we went out for our FY26 overlay, uh, bid for, uh, streets, street paving, uh, received two bids, uh, one from Scotty's, Scotty's Contracting and Stone, and then Clear Reconstruction. Uh, in your packets is, is the summary of Scotty's bid was $1,999,995. Uh, we are recommending to go with that bid. Uh, we think we can get 12 miles of, uh, city street paving, asphalt repairs, 27 handicap ramp replacements as well. And, uh, in your packets, uh, is a tentative list of streets. I emphasize tentative, because, uh, sometimes we run into, uh, some, some places where we find out they're going to do some street cuts for utilities, so we hold off and, uh, and we, uh, move some things around. But, uh, this is the, the list we think, uh, we're going with, uh, for now. And, uh, I'd like to thank, uh, Melanie's here for, with us, uh, tonight. Uh, Melanie Shire, construction coordinator too, uh, helped put this together, Melissa Cansler, city engineer. Of course, Andy is here, uh, can answer any of your questions on this one, but, uh, recommending Scotty's for just under the, the $2 million amount.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mizel. Great list of roads that we have here in the packet. Probably 120 roads here, minimum, or somewhere around, around that. And as, as you said, they're tentative, but we go as the needs are necessary, and, and like you say, be smart about where we're going to cut, and try not to go cut a pavement, you know, a less than a year after.
Trying not to overlay when you got somebody coming right in behind you and cutting it up, so we try to avoid that.
Hey, questions at this... Roll call, please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Ordinance number BG 2025-28, first reading, non-binding.
Ordinance relating to budget amendment. Ordinance approving amendment number one to the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky Annual Operating Budget for Fiscal Year 2026.
Second.
Move back Commissioner Hill, second back Commissioner Bailey, Mr. Mizel.
This is our first, uh, amendment to our FY26 budget. In this amendment, uh, you're looking at some donations and grants. Uh, we also captured the arbitrage payment that we voted on the last meeting, uh, and also there's an insurance settlement in here to adjust the budget. Uh, but Aaron Blue, uh, is here with us and can answer any of your questions on this, but it's pretty straightforward. It's mostly additional revenues that we have, uh, brought in through grants and donations along with the other two items, so Aaron can, can add or answer any of your questions.
Questions at this time? And roll call, please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Ordinance number BG 2025-29, first reading, non-binding.
Ordinance submitting code of ordinances. Ordinance repealing chapter seven cable communications of the City of Bowling Green Code of Ordenses.
Come up. Back Commissioner Paragon, second back Commissioner Bailey, Mr. Mizel.
Uh, basically, all I can say is chapter seven is, uh, no longer applicable, and so we are, uh, recommending the, um, repeal of chapter seven. And Hillary can, uh, add any other information, Ashley, um, but we, we felt like it's time to repeal this, given what we've, uh, approved here recently with the, the new agreement with, um, Spectrum. Franchise agreement.
If you all remember, we created a new ordinance, um, at the last meeting, I think was the second reading, 2025-23, and it sets out the updated requirements. So these are very, very old, um, and so we're not using them anymore.
Any other questions? Comments? None? Roll call.
Bailey.
Yes.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number 2025-273.
Municipal order approving appointments of Kim Adwell and Scott Lindsay to the Bowling Green Area Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Don't move.
Second.
Back Commissioner Hill, second back Commissioner Beasley Brown. We actually had two recent resignations from the board, and I went to, this is one where we have to have Judge Gorman and I sync our recommendations, and also went to Sherri Murphy for recommendations, and we have Scott Lindsay from Rafferty's. Adwell, sorry, Kim Adwell and Scott Lindsay to the Bowling Green, but Scott Lindsay's from Rafferty's, Kim Adwell is from the hospitality industry, and I highly recommend them. This is a united recommendation for this board appointment, pointies. Okay? Roll call, please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Ordinance number BG 2025-24.
Ordinance relating to Classification Pay Schedule. Ordinance submitting the Classification Pay Schedule G for General Classified and U for Unclassified Part-Time Employees of the City of Bowling Green for Fiscal Year 2026.
Don't move.
Second.
Back Commissioner Perigin, second back Commissioner Brown, Mr. Musson. Oh, this is our second reading, this is five no at our last commission meeting. Any further questions, discussion? Ben, thank you for being here tonight. Roll call, please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Ordinance number BG 2025-25, second reading, binding.
Ordinance renaming street. Ordinance approving the renaming of Cypresswood Lane to Gator Way.
Don't move.
Second.
Move back Commissioner Beasley Brown, second back Commissioner Hill. This was also five no at our last commission meeting. Unless there's any further questions, comments, roll call, please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Mrs. Jackson, would you check to see if we have anyone that wants to make comments tonight? Our next scheduled meeting is scheduled for November 18th at 2025 here at City Hall at 4:30 PM. Thank you, Mrs. Jackson. All right. Mary Steele, would you please come up to the podium? And Mrs. Steele, we will give you five minutes, that's what we have per ordinance, and I'm looking for my clock, and I'll get that in a second. Hold on just a second, apologize.
Honorable mayor.
All right, you may start.
Commissioners.
Mrs. Steele?
Royal mayor and commissioners, city officials, I'm pretty sure at one time you've talked to me, and I promised not to be that long tonight. This is just something that's very dear and to my heart. So I want to speak to you this evening about mental illness. All right? And I want to say that I have about 30 or so years' experience in the mental health world as a patient. All right? Now, I've come this far by faith, like we all have, and it started, it started because I was dehydrated, because a brain is like a plum, a good old delicious plum, which becomes a prune on the other side. When we are dehydrated, our brain is in this condition, prune, prune condition, all right? Now, when that happens, all the electrical connections in our brain cease to happen just normally. And that happened to me. Unaware of that, unaware of the fact that I was dehydrated, simply because I drank too much water. Too much water will dehydrate us because it'll wash more and more of our electrolytes out. The typical things that happen to you when you're dehydrated, you lose weight, you usually have diarrhea maybe, and you have lethargy, just lots of things. But to me, what happened was simply that I went through a period of time where I thought about during that time killing myself, because I thought if I would just drive over that ravine, that everybody else would be okay. That's not a reasonable thing, but I always worried about my family and all the people that I love and care about, which is all of you all, and all the people behind me and all our county and all over the world, I guess I would say. But this is, so I simply looked in the, I simply went and looked in the phone book and picked out a psychiatrist. So that began my journey. And in those years, I studied many books about mental health, and, you know, it ended after all those years, and I can tell you, many wonderful doctors, many wonderful, you know, nurse practitioners, counselors, all those things. But finally, one day, they took me off of the medicines little by little by little. Also had heart troubles, so they were pushing me back and forth and say, "Well, go to that doctor, because we're not sure. Go to that doctor, we're not sure. And so that's okay. There is no way to really know what our bodies are like. I always say, when you go to the doctor, you have to tell him everything because a doctor can't doctor if the doctor doesn't know what the doctor's doctoring." I think that's a takeoff on Barney, on Andy Griffith, but anyway, no, it's Festus Hagen in Gunsmoke. Yeah, he was talking to Doc, but anyway, this is what I'm saying.
You have about 30 seconds left.
Okay. Then I hope and pray to work with you all and anybody the best I can to tell you what I learned, what I have, you know, gone through from you all, the professional people that are here. But this is one thing that I want to quote to you. There was a thing, saying that was by, it says, I'll have to think of the one that wrote Old Man in the Sea. Tell me, tell me, tell me the name. Hemingway, Ernest Hemingway, thank you, yes. And so this is a little bit of stage fright I'm going through, okay? But this is what it said. "The world breaks everyone, but many are stronger at the broken places." Now, if you know Farewell to Arms, that's a book, and Ernest Hemingway killed himself. This is also, there is, you know, there has to be, you know, hope, and we have to talk about dehydration in the brains. And so thank you for this opportunity to talk, and I look forward to working with you all in every, every way.
Thank you, Mrs. Steele.
Take care, God bless you all for the hard work you do and for keeping my lights on. Thank you.
Thank you. You're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.